Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the Tuesday, April 19th, 2011 meeting of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Renee Griffith to give our invocation, please ma'am.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege that we have to serve you and to serve this county. We pray that you give us wise decisions, give us wisdom to make wise decisions. We pray for our servicemen and women that are across this country and in foreign lands serving, that you will protect them. We also pray for our leaders at the state and at the national level, that you will also give them wisdom to make wise decisions for our country. We thank you for the freedoms that you have given us, and we do not take those freedoms lightly tonight, as we're able to meet and assemble without fear. We thank you for the blessings that you have blessed this country and our county. Again, we pray for wisdom and we ask all these things. In your Son's name, Jesus, amen.
Join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the adjustments of the agenda, I do want to say one thing. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a commissioner sitting up here tonight with a leg broken in two places. And if this is not a dedicated public servant, I've never seen one. Thank you, Mr. Norman. I appreciate that dedication.
Appreciate that.
I've always said you were a tough old coot, and tonight you proved it. But thank you for being here. Mr. Mashburn, are there any adjustments of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, the only adjustment I have is to remove the closed session at the end of the agenda. Other than that, I don't have anything to adjust.
Okay. Any adjustments of the agenda coming from the board? If not, a motion is in order for adoption of this agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mr. Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have presentations of special recognitions and awards, the first of which is a presentation of a proclamation proclaiming Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, May 1st through the 7th, 2011. And I'm the sponsor of this proclamation, so if it indulges me, I'm going to read it from the microphone here. Whereas all children, without regard to challenges they face, are valuable and significant part of the rich and diverse resources of our present and our future; and whereas support for our youth as they grow and develop from cradle to career is essential to the success of children, families, and the community; and whereas mental health is essential to overall health and well-being; and whereas according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children has a mental health disorder and one in ten adolescents aged 9 to 17 have a serious mental illness; and whereas with proper treatment and support, children with mental health disorders can succeed in all life domains and reach their full potential moving from cradle to career; and whereas as parents, doctors, and nurses, teachers, guidance counselors, neighbors, friends, concerned citizens, and faith-based communities are among the many who can reach out to children, youth, and their families in our community who are in need of support, education, information, encouragement, and mental health services; and whereas community members can help establish safe and supportive communities that encourage and engage all young people regardless of their challenges to reach their full potential; and whereas strong youth and adult, and young adults will strive to positively change the misconceptions about youth with the mental illness diagnoses to a vision of strong and capable young people who can overcome challenges; and whereas the Iredale County Board of County Commissioners joins with our mental health community and community organizations in recognizing the need to raise awareness about our children and mental health, commending those who work to support our youth and celebrate those children with mental health disorders who reach for their full potential. Now therefore, the Iredale County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims May 1st through May 7th, 2011, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week in Iredale County, North Carolina, and commends its observance to our citizens. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set in my hand this 19th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2011, and is signed by myself, Stephen Johnson, Chairman. I believe we have a representative, Mr. Swan, here this evening. He was unable to come. If he'd come forth, we'll present this proclamation to him. Pat Stewart, the United Way Education Grant Manager, desires to speak regarding the Teachers' Matters Initiative. Ms. Stewart, could you come forward, please? Welcome. We're glad to have you this morning.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Mashburn, and all of the commissioners, I do, and Bill, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak with you for a few moments tonight. I recognize that your field of service is broadly spread across many issues and responsibilities of support for the people of our county, and I just want to talk to you about one of those tonight, and that is our public education. Most of you probably have heard that our United Way was one of 14 United Ways in the country, in the three states of Florida, Tennessee, and North Carolina, that were selected to accept a grant that was issued by United Way Worldwide and funded by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to work in a grassroots effort in our community to further the characteristic of teacher effectiveness. And we all know that education is of supreme importance, and from time to time, there will be a focus, excuse me, on specific characteristics of public education. And it seems that now, government organizations, foundations that are interested in funding initiatives to improve public education, and United Ways in general, are all focused on the characteristic of teacher effectiveness. And so this grant was given to these 14 local communities really without many parameters or restrictions, because they recognize that we know our communities best, and that we could fashion this discovery process in a way that we felt would be successful and welcomed by the citizens of our communities. We began our study to identify best practices that are already in existent at the Iredale State School Schools with a survey of our local teachers. We had a lot of research from around the country and throughout the state of North Carolina, but we wanted to see what our own teachers thought about effective teaching. And so that was our first probe, and we had a result that we felt was really positive. We had 538 teachers to respond to that survey. And I want to give you an example of an outcome that we immediately achieved by just asking six short, basic questions. One of those questions was, "Do you feel that you get adequate feedback to use for your improvement in becoming more effective in your classroom?" Seventy-five percent of those respondents answered yes, that they do. And so everybody felt pretty good about that. But then we challenged ourselves to look at the other 25 percent. Those are teachers that were saying, "I want to do a great job. This is the career I've chosen, and I'm not really getting the constructive feedback that I would like for improvement." So in a year when the state of North Carolina had cut to zero all teacher mentoring funding, Brady Johnson, our superintendent, and his leadership team immediately went to work to become creative in addressing that issue that we brought to the forefront. And so without any funding, without any expenses, they recruited a teacher, a master teacher, at each school. So there is now a site-based mentoring program where teachers that want help, need help, they know where to go to ask for that help, and they have more frequent access by having that teacher right in their own school. If you will follow me, I'm going to zip through this little presentation for you. But this is the presentation that I gave to our last community coalition meeting. And that group is about 45 to 50 people from throughout Troutman, the upper end of Mooresville, Statesville, and northern Iredale County, east and west, who have joined us to study what it takes to be an effective teacher. And so, of course, this is a very bold statement here, but our children really are our future. I think that we recognize that we focus on their future, but it really is our future Economically, when we're thinking about the students in the schools right now, today's students are tomorrow's workforce. I think we all know that. The majority of the teachers with Iredale State School Schools right now, the majority of them are Iredale County natives. And so thinking about that, we can say, the 21,500 students that we're educating through ISS right now, they're going to be our teachers, or at least many of them will. They're also going to be our leaders. They are now our neighbors and will remain our neighbors. As our population is aging and we approach an age where someone else is going to have to care for us, these students are going to be our caregivers, and they are going to be who we are as a community. So this slide right here really is one that sort of encapsulates the importance of the work that we've been allowed to do. How well we educate our children influences our business environment. They're going to be our employees of tomorrow, and they're going to manage their own businesses, our social lives, the gang activity that we will experience in our communities, the student's success in life. And in reality, it's going to influence who we are as a community. Now, one of the best opportunities of getting this grant was that there was an encouragement from the Gates Foundation and from United Way Worldwide for us to look at our public schools, and what they're doing, and how they do it, and what their success is, and areas for improvement. But they also encouraged us to go out into the community and conduct listening sessions. And that has been one of our greatest successes. They didn't want us just to focus on traditional education stakeholders, as are you, people who care intently about education, but they also wanted us to go out and talk to and listen to non-traditional stakeholders, and specifically disengaged parents of current students. As I began this work, I was a teacher right out of college here in Iredale County, and so immediately, I got back into the feeling of, "I'm back in education now." And I was so pleased as I began to work with Brady Johnson and his leadership team to realize how innovative and creative they are. Our school district is recognized nationally for those two characteristics. They are committed, truly committed, to continuous improvement. When we had our first coalition kickoff meeting at Mitchell Community College, and I believe, Mr. Mitchell, that you were present there, we had two representatives from Raleigh, from the United Way of North Carolina, who joined us. And after the meeting was over, both of them came up to me and said, "What an outstanding superintendent you have." And I'm shaking my head, "Yes, I know." And then they finished that sentence, because he spoke for a little bit about some of the successes that they have experienced. But he spent the biggest part of his time talking about what we are yet not as successful with as we want to be. So at that time, before we got our most recent numbers from the state, we had 81 percent of our students at a proficiency level or above. But ISS leadership is focused on continuing that fine tradition, but bringing that 19 percent up. That's where their real focus is. You see on this slide about the I-3 federal grants, and there were almost 1,700 education institutions that applied for those competitive grants. 1,698, they gave out 46, and Iredale State School Schools was one of those. And when Secretary Arnie Duncan called Brady Johnson, he said to the leadership team at ISS, "What we're looking for is game-changing transformation, and they will get that from the work that ISS does." One of the most encouraging things that we learned from our survey of the teachers was that our teachers want more community involvement in the schools. They want that, and they need it. And the other thing that just stands out as a highlight to me through these last 15 months is to witness and hear from the teachers how much they value learning from one another, collaborating, and ISS has in place many opportunities for that collaboration. The teachers want and need more. So we moved out, and we started talking to parents, parents especially the ones that are not engaged. How many decades has it been that we've all been talking about the issue of lack of parental involvement? It's out there, and we know it. I think it has appeared to be so big a problem that we've not known what to do. This coalition has decided we are going to make a dent in it, and then hopefully the next year, we'll hit it harder and make a bigger dent. Here are some of the ways that we are trying to do that. We went out and we had three listening sessions involving 60 parents that dropped out of school themselves. Most of them live in our Stateful Housing Authority communities. Some of them are not. But I talked to parents ranging in age from 18 to 82 years old. All of them are studying right now to get their GED. I had to talk to those two people in that one group that were in their 80s. They are energetic about getting their GED. And so we asked them to tell us about their education experience. Then after we listened to that, we said, "How is it going with your own children?" And that's when the room fell a little quiet, because they began to talk about something that was dear to them. Keeping in mind, none of these are parents that darken the doors of their children's schools. It isn't because they don't care. They see themselves as failures. They valued our taking the time to come out and listen to their opinions. When I shared with them some of the results from the teachers' survey, and the idea that if they would come to the schools, the teachers really want to partner with them, sort of a team teaching their children every year, on the sheets where they wrote impressions from our discussions, this is where the statement comes in their own words, "Thinking about partnering with my child's teachers gives me hope." And they were serious. They also said things like, "This lets us know y'all really do care about us." And there are a lot of us that care. You care a lot about every citizen in Iredale County. Sometimes we have to reach a little further to help them to see that, and that's what this opportunity has done for us. They want their children to succeed, and they know that they need help in making that We asked the teachers, and we also asked parents, "What do you think an effective teacher looks like?" And this is what we heard. First of all, they have an encouraging and caring personality. Of course, they need to have a good knowledge of the subject that they're teaching. Here is a key one, that they have the ability to engage students in learning. I guess we don't like to think about it, but every day in every classroom, there are students present, but they're not learning. Some of them are not learning. Truly effective teachers have figured out something special that will get to each and every one of their students, and they inspire them and they help them to believe that they can do the work. All effective teachers have high expectations of their students. And the students that we interviewed at the Boys and Girls Club, from some of the poorest families in our community, you should have heard them talking about their favorite teachers. They are strict. They don't let us get by with anything. They tell us, "You can do this work, and I'm going to show you how you can do it." They're not looking for an easy ride. They want to learn. And of course, we want all teachers to always be prepared. And then this last one, relationship building. And you know that this is true, and probably in whatever business you're in. We all have to be skilled at building relationships to achieve whatever it is that we're trying to achieve. This is a picture of one of our students at Shepherd and his teacher. And I titled this picture, "Recognizable Joy." They have a real connection, not just because their fingers are touching, but that is a child that has moved to our county somewhat recently, and has found a home quickly because his teacher has built a relationship with him. That's what we want for all of our students. These next slides, I'm going to give you copies of these. I won't take the time to talk about them, because I know your time is precious tonight.
Ms. Stewart, if you could please begin to wind it up.
I am.
We have a number of people we need to hear from this evening.
I'm going right there, right now. I'm going to leave you copies of these. This is what we're trying to avoid. A student was asked, "What's your situation like in this classroom?" Well, I raise my hand a lot because I want to answer, but the teacher never calls on me, only her few favorites. It's like I'm not even there. So in that class, my experience is a flat line instead of a heartbeat. I think that's very graphic. We don't ever want this to be the situation, but sometimes it is. Strategies for implementation, and this is how I'm wrapping up. I've already told you about the new teacher mentoring program. And by the way, the teachers that were recruited for that are proud to have been asked. Iredale State School Schools is implementing with the new school year, a community classroom. Some communities call it a parent university. If the parents that are not engaged now will not come to the schools, community partners with the schools, like the Boys and Girls Club, the Iredale Partnership for Young Children, and others, are going to go into neighborhood centers and offer some of this instruction to help them to understand what they do have to offer. We're creating a district-wide resource database. Every classroom teacher will be able to tell us what their needs are that will help them enhance their effectiveness, and we're going to work hard to recruit community support to give them that. The last piece is about professional development, and I'll close with this. Brady Johnson has read a book, maybe some of you have. It's called "The Fred Factor." It's a small book. It's a quick read. You can probably read it in an hour's time. Fred was a postal service, a mailman, but he looked at every person he met in his personal life and his business life as his customer. And his passion for serving people turned his ordinary life into an extraordinary life. And so Mr. Johnson, in thinking that that spoke so well to building relationships with all of the students at ISS, is now conducting a principal study group on that book. And I would encourage- And I would encourage you to get it and read it. It's an outstanding book by Mark Sanborn. I want to thank you for your time to listen tonight and remind you that the first week of May is National Teacher Appreciation Week and hope that you'll find time to thank a teacher or two.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Next, we have under points for the board, Mr. John Perrin, Troutman resident, that desires to speak about solid waste fees in mobile home parks. Mr. Perrin, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Happy day after tax day. I'm here to talk about solid waste fee at vacant mobile home lots. We're charged forty dollars and fifty cents, I'm a park owner by the way, per year, per lot, even if they're vacant. And some of these parks, mine included, have had vacant lots for years. And we're being charged this fee. Fee is charged, but there's no service being rendered. It's called an availability fee. And there's a lot of jokes about availability fees. I thought I'd tell you one, but I decided against it. If you've heard some, I don't think you want me to say it. The mobile home sales are down, repossessions are up, and financing is very difficult to get. So our businesses are being squeezed from both sides, the higher costs and lower demand. Rental lots are not like campsites, apartments, rental houses. They have a different character. Mobile homes stay vacant for years because, and if they stay, if they come to your park, they stay for years because the cost of moving them is rather prohibitive. So they stay there. If the house is there, you should be charging a fee for availability or for the solid waste fees. That's not a problem, even if, just like an apartment or a rental house. The house is there, whether it's rented or not, that's not your concern. You have the service available. However, if the lot is vacant in a mobile home park, there's no one there to service, no matter how hard you try. And Mooresville is going to enact a recycling fee. They supposedly asked around, probably two or three people, and they said, "Yeah, we wanna do this and we're willing to pay for it." Well, they didn't ask anyone in my park, which is forty-four families, well, thirty-nine families, I should say. That's about thirty-nine dollars a year per family. And I'm sure they're gonna use your model as an availability fee charge. I've already talked to the commissioners there. They haven't decided on what to do yet, but I think they would probably follow your lead. I would hope that we can change this. That's the problem. And I've also brought you a solution. I think this is kind of a rare thing. There's several ways the tax office has to monitor available occupied mobile home lots. Annually, the mobile home park owners fill out a form listing all the owners for tax purposes. They have that list there. So therefore, they know who's there. In my case, I have thirty-nine occupied lots and there are five empties. So they have that list. Now, there's a possibility that someone could move into the park during the year. Okay, in order to move into the park, you have to go to the zoning office in Mooresville and pay a redundant fee in Statesville, is the zoning office, to get the permits to put the park, or the mobile home on the park. At that point, the zoning office could charge a prorated fee and it could be put right into the zoning fee. So that covers any partial years that might come up. And thirdly, you have GIS maps. And at the end of the year, the tax office can look at GIS maps, they can look at the list and see if there's any incongruities and figure it out. And the tax office just has to get the report from the zoning department. So that, that's the problem and that's the solution, I would think. We're just asking that you revise the current fee procedure to provide a more equitable procedure. And I've got five more minutes to talk, but I won't do it.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Do you have any questions, Mr. Perrin? Guess not. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time, we declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to consideration of a resolution allowing the transportation director to submit a Section 5310 elderly and disabled grant application to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Mr. Garrison?
Thank you. The purpose of this is to hold a public hearing on the proposed FTA Section 53 grant application for elderly and disabled. The action required would be to adopt a resolution. Also, part of the process is to hold a public hearing for the citizen input. The application for this grant was actually due yesterday and I submitted the application. It would be considered a Category B application until we actually hold a public hearing, so the funding would be held. The period of performance on this grant is two years from July 1st of '11 through the end of June of 2013. Rural transit across the state is concerned about the possibility of the Rural Operating Assistance Program funding being cut. And we've heard estimates that that funding cuts could be as high as thirty-nine percent. If that would happen, most rural transit systems would probably have no alternative than to cut service. And the concern we have is that we live in a time where we need to be providing service primarily to our elderly and disabled. Some of the target groups that we would target through this grant would be Dallas's transportation, some services to developmentally disabled, and also use this grant for medical transportation to transport people both in county and out of county, such as the VA Hospital. The grant would be for one hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. It's a fifty percent federal and fifty percent local match. And we do use our rope funding as the local match for these grants. So the ability to provide the service, of course, then, is gonna be contingent on how much rope funds we're able to draw down. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Garrison?
If the rope funding goes away, will the county be required to replace that funding?
No.
So none of this grant match has to come from the county?
No. It's all from, we use rope funds and then some of the, it's reduced by passenger fares.
If you're given the grant and seventy-five thousand comes from the federal and then the rope funding goes away completely, will you be required to give that money back to the federal government?
Actually, we don't receive the money. We have to invoice after the fact. So we're providing the service using the rope money and then we're billing for the 5310 money.
Okay.
So we would have to cut service.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is anyone else who wishes to speak in regard to this? If not, the request before the board is the, is a resolution that we need to adopt. Is that right, Mr. Garrison?
That's correct.
Okay. Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to adopt the resolution, Section 5310.
Motion for approval or adoption, excuse me, by Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you.
We have the next item, consideration of a resolution allowing the transportation director to submit a federal transit administration job access and reverse commute grant application to the North Carolina Department of Transportation.
Basically, the same parameters apply to this grant. It just has a different purpose. Again, I've already submitted the application and it's in a Category B status. Job access reverse commute grants really target transportation or employment transportation to persons with low income. We use it to transport to employment sites, but we also use it to transport people that have been displaced from jobs that are returning to the community college for continuing their education. Just as an idea of how much we provide with this particular grant, in the first eight months of this fiscal year, we provided nineteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two employment trips in Ardenell County. So employment transportation is becoming one of our leading requests for service in what we do. This grant is for two hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. Again, it's a two-year period of performance. It has a fifty-fifty match and we, again, use our rope funding as the local match for this particular grant. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Garrison?
What is your current fee that you charge for transportation?
Two dollars.
Your current fee?
Two dollars per trip.
Is that any, two dollars per trip anywhere in the county?
Well, if you live in extreme parts of the county, it would be four dollars. Most of the trips that we provide, though, are within the two-dollar range. We've got the county in zones, but most of our service would be in the two-dollar range.
And you have a huge territory to cover and I admire you for what you get done, so.
Sure.
I said you have a huge territory to cover and I just wanted to thank you for doing a good job that you all do over there.
Well, thank you. It is a big county.
Okay, any other questions? Is anyone else who speaks in regard, wish to speak in regard to this? If not, the request again is for adoption of a resolution. Floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption.
Motion to adopt the resolution from Mr. Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mashburn, we're down to administrative matters.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna call on Tracy Jackson to present the first two items on the agenda. One, a request from the Fire Operations Committee, and the other is a sublease agreement pertaining to a communications tower.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here tonight to present an idea from the Fire Operations Planning Committee. It's really a statement and it reads as follows. "The developer of any major subdivision as defined by the current Ardenell County Land Development Ordinance, which after review causes a negative impact on the ISO rating of the service district, shall be required to mitigate any negative impact by implementing measures to maintain the current ISO rating of the fire district." Now, to give you a little further explanation on this, the committee has done some very good work over the period of time that it's been, been meeting. We've really looked at funding issues. There's been a lot of concern about the what-ifs for the future in terms of funding for the fire service. One of those issues had to do with the possibility that Lake Norman Volunteer Fire Department might pull out at some point in the future from the countywide fire tax district. I think the committee and others have played a key role in trying to address that. And one of the other issues that sprung from the committee in discussion, and it's been a big area of focus for us, is what about the future in terms of maintaining insurance ratings? The fire departments have worked very hard to get to where they're at, to be able to improve their fire insurance ratings and to therefore decrease the premiums to homeowners and business owners in the county. And they want to see some effort in the future to be able to maintain those ratings or perhaps even continue to improve those ratings as the county grows. So what we bring to you tonight is just this simple statement. It's fairly broad, but it's intended just to generate some conversation, some discussion about those needs that may be coming along the road in the future.
Okay. Any other questions?
We have Mr. Nolan Schumaker here tonight, who actually chaired that committee. Do you have anything you'd like to add to that, Mr. Schumaker? This was probably the topic that generated more discussion and debate than any other. Wouldn't you agree, Mr. Jackson?
We were there for a good while discussing this and the possibilities and what may be done and what's realistic and what's maybe not realistic.
Okay. Ms. Roberts, you were there. You have anything to add?
Yeah, I would like to thank Chief Schumaker for his leadership and the time that he spent tackling that difficult issue. It was, it's no easy task and these guys in our volunteer fire service, they spend an awful lot of time preparing so that they can get certified and licensed and anointed and all the different things that they have to do, just so that they can answer the call at two in the morning when the rest of us are in bed. And this was just an additional, an additional task that we asked him to do and he stepped up and led. So thank you. Thank you very much. And this is a, this is a very simple, not a bunch of hitherto's and whitherfores and legalese. It's pretty plain spoken. These fire departments have worked incredibly hard. This county has invested a significant amount of money to get these fire ratings improved and what we wanna do is keep them that way. So, thank you very much, sir.
Simply stated, but not so easily arrived at. Wouldn't you agree with that?
I would agree with that.
Yes. Just a minute.
Who will monitor if a subdivision is going to cause a negative impact to the community?
We discussed that in the committee and there are some different options in terms of county departments that would need to work together. Could be from zoning to fire marshal's office, perhaps would even involve some of the local private water companies. Just really depends on what we're talking about in terms of trying to mitigate any growth that could impact the fire rating.
And what type of thing would a subdivision do that would cause a negative impact? Could you give me an example on an ISO rating?
Depending on the number of homes, the size of homes, the density of the subdivision, whether it's served with water or through on well water, accessibility to hydrants. I mean, there's a, there are a number of things that impact the ISO ratings, but water is a big one and access to water.
Do you foresee this potentially causing us to have to create a department or hire additional staff to monitor this?
You know, it depends a lot, I think, on the size of the growth or the amount of growth we have in the county. I don't see, you know, from this point, and it's hard to tell, you know, how rapidly the county might grow in the future, having to form a whole new department. I think there's enough staff at the onset to be able to monitor this and to be able to use methods, procedures that are already in place. Can't promise that you won't need some extra staff in the future, but for now.
We do preclude that to some degree by limiting it to a major subdivision. So anytime anybody builds a small subdivision that's not right, right to the level of the major subdivision, they won't be affected by this. It's primarily gonna be somebody who builds a home in an area of a service district that is in the corner of a district, barely in it, with limited water, limited access of water. And, you know, I'm as reluctant to anybody to tell somebody they can't build anywhere. But you could conceivably have one subdivision who could, who could come into a service district after that fire department and taxpayers in that existing district have spent out tens of thousands of dollars to get their insurance rating. And one subdivision could come in there and ruin the whole rating. And I don't know that allowing him to exercise his freedom at the expense of everyone else is the fair thing to do.
I think that's a fair statement and I think that pretty, pretty well summarizes where the fire departments have concerns for the future.
Can I ask one more question? What is the definition of a major subdivision by our land development ordinance at this point? point?
I may have to refer to somebody in the planning department or zoning department to help us out with that.
Ten lots or more, or it can be smaller if there's a road involved, new road involved, but it's basically over ten lots.
Where you at the mic? Go ahead, I didn't mean.
I'm done, thank you.
Where you at the microphone, Mr. Smith? You said it would probably best to incorporate this into the ordinances for your 2030 plan, I recall.
Yeah, I think it would have to be. Otherwise, there'd be no way to stop or limit those subdivisions from actually getting approved before this review goes forward. So, we would have to probably take the language here and insert it in the land development code before it gets adopted.
Would the developer be given an opportunity to modify their plans to meet the rating?
That's the whole idea. In the word mitigate, that gives him options. He can stand on his head and spit nickels if that'll solve the problem.
I hate to see more things, you know, I understand the argument on the fire department's side and the county's side because there have been a lot of money spent, a lot of time and effort. I also hate to see us potentially put things in place that could hinder growth and, but thank you for your, for answering this question. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I mean, some of the stuff, I mean, this is for the protection of the community. You know, I mean, this is for the protection of the citizens.
I mean, they, they're the one who've been paying the fire tax.
Yeah.
That bought the fire truck, that bought the fire hose, that got the insurance rating down. And they've got their insurance down because they spent the money on the front end. Somebody comes in, does a type of development that harms that insurance rating, so everybody's home insurance goes up because what's allowed him to do. You know, I was, I was overcome by that argument as compared to letting anybody do anything.
Like making the road wide enough so that the fire trucks can get down it?
Yeah, that's, that could be it. That could be all they need.
So, I mean, who, the people in that neighborhood are better served by, by this.
Okay. And, Mr. Jackson, you're not one to brag on yourself, but you did a lot of fact-finding on that committee yourself and gathered a lot of information. We appreciate your service on that committee as well.
Thank you. We appreciate as well your service and the service of Commissioner Robertson on that committee also.
Okay. So, the request you have is, I'm going to interpret the request like this, that this be included in the 2030 plan as it relates to subdivisions. Is that a correct way to say it?
I'd say the land development code.
Right. So, that's the request we have. Before you, is the floor open for a motion?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, you still here? Go ahead, Mr. Mashburn. I keep trying to take your job.
Mr. Jackson has it. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a sublease agreement for a statewide communications systems tower. So, basically what this does, it allows our responders to connect into the state system and communicate locally. You know, if there was a major disaster, they could not only be able to talk here throughout the county on those radios, they could also go to other places or even communicate while they're en route to other places within North Carolina. The state's been working on this system for a number of years. They helped to fund it with Homeland Security money post nine eleven and they've been growing the system slowly over time. Part of the way they do that is by partnering with local governments and in this situation, this does benefit us because not only can we communicate on a local, regional, and statewide basis, but we can also add equipment onto their tower that they're proposing to, to build on Fox Mountain. So, that gives us some extra redundancy in terms of our communication system.
Okay, any questions? If not, floor's open for a motion.
It doesn't state here, but I guess the action request is just to approve the ten-year sublease agreement?
Yeah.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Robertson for approval of this request. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
The item C is a request from the Health Department and Susan Johnson, Director of Nursing at the Health Department, will make that presentation.
We received notification recently that we would be eligible for sixteen thousand, ninety-three dollars in additional Title X bonus funds. And I'm here tonight to request a budget amendment for that amount so that we can use that money to perform five tubal ligations. These Title X bonus funds come in typically in about February each year. We get notified when the state starts looking at how money's being spent and what might not be spent, they start kind of reallocating it. And, and we are notified. And a couple of years ago, we made arrangements, as we were encouraged to do by the state, to have contracts in place and a waiting list for women that would like to have their tubes tied that would otherwise not be able to do that. So, we have done that proactively and we have five women lined up to have their tubes tied if this is approved. You have questions?
How many women are currently on the list?
We have twenty-six on the list.
What's the longest any woman has been waiting?
Probably less than a year. I don't know the exact amount of time, but I'm sure it's been less than a year. We did receive some funds in December and were able to do three or four at that time and then we received funds last year as well.
Okay, any other questions? Not, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve budget minimum number thirty-eight.
Motion to approve budget minimum number thirty-eight from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Our Finance Director, Susan Blumenthal, will present item D and E and these relate also to budget amendments.
Thank you. Budget Amendment Number Thirty-nine is being presented to allocate some or appropriate some additional fund balance in the workers' compensation self-insurance fund. Early in this year, we did have to use a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of what we had budgeted for claims for a negotiated settlement. At this point, we need additional funds appropriated to make it and pay our bills for April, May, and June. Following this appropriation, which is, I'm requesting seventy thousand dollars to finish out the year, our fund balance will remain over nine hundred thousand dollars in that self-insurance fund.
Any questions?
Is that remaining amount a healthy amount or is that real good or not real good?
I feel comfortable with that amount because it's two years. You know, we, we budgeted about four hundred and twenty-six, I believe, no, excuse me, four seventy-six. So, we're not quite two years' cost that we'll have this year remaining in fund balance. We could always have an extraordinary year, but since we moved into self-insuring our workers' comp, we have saved a lot of money. I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of budget amendment number thirty-nine.
Motion for approval, budget amendment number thirty-nine from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion on his motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is a request to appropriate the funds that we did set aside in a contingency line item this year specifically for fuel. Just like every other business and individual in Arido County, we have had unprecedented cost in our fuel since January. Our fees that were our cost for diesel is up fifty-five percent on a per gallon rate since the first of July and we do not have to pay the federal and state transportation taxes. Our regular unleaded gasoline is up fifty-one percent per gallon. We've used over two hundred and twenty thousand gallons of fuel since the first of July. Majority of those costs, fifty-eight percent of those costs are in the Sheriff's Department, but that office has reduced their daily use by about six percent since this time last year. So, I'd ask that you allow me to move this hundred thousand dollars out into our departments so that they can make it through the rest of the year. Part of these funds, or excuse me, I'm not having to request any of these funds be used in EMS, although that's where the majority of our diesel is used because this year we have had the best year ever and debt sat off on old ambulance bills. So, I'm going to request or recognize some of that revenue we've received to support that department in their fuel cost.
Any questions? Ms. Blumenthal?
I have one, but it's not necessarily about this amendment, but about kind of looking forward. I just did a few rough calculations here. In ballpark, we, we had budgeted about five hundred thousand dollars or so for fuel this year and then we put a hundred thousand dollars in a contingency fund. So, so that means that this year, we're basically, we're going to spend about six hundred thousand dollars on fuel roughly. As we look, and I know y'all are putting together the budget, last year, we, we budgeted five hundred thousand, we put a hundred thousand in contingency. That means that we had about a twenty percent contingency. We planned, our contingency fund was about twenty percent of the total. So, if you assume that the baseline of fuel prices that we have now are going to be about where we enter in July, and I suspect they'll be higher, are y'all planning to, to make our baseline funding about six hundred thousand and then appropriate another twenty percent of six hundred thousand as a contingency for next year? Or, or do you think that we probably ought to up that contingency amount for next year in case we actually see five dollar a gallon fuel like they're predicting?
When we developed our budget this year, we instructed the departments to budget for a thirty-two percent increase in their departments. In addition, at this point, we haven't finalized our budget, but I have put another hundred thousand in a contingency on top of the thirty-two percent increase in the departments.
It says fifty-eight percent of this fuel is used by the Sheriff's Department, so there's forty-two percent being used by the rest of the departments. Do you know what percentage of that forty-two percent is EMS?
I'm sorry, I didn't bring it with me.
That's fine.
And I have not moved. Some departments are going to be okay. The assessors' office or reappraisal, I'm not having to ask for additional funding there. I believe vehicle services is one that's going to be okay. Recreation is one that's going to be okay and I apologize, I didn't think to bring like a pot charger.
Is there any way that we can look at reducing the, the amount of gas used? The Sheriff's Department has reduced it by six percent. I mean, are there, are we looking at some of those measures as well rather than just budgeting more money? Everybody's spending more on gas. I mean, that's the reality of where we are. I do understand that.
And the departments have been very good. They, they're not making unnecessary trips. I know one of the things that, that the Sheriff's Department, that they implemented early into this fiscal year was they don't just ride patrol all night, they park in strategic locations so they're not just riding the road all night long to try to save on fuel. But...
That has its downside in that it cuts down the visibility of them being in the community, but, you know, there's got to be a trade-off somewhere.
Because of ethanol, you're not getting as good a gas mileage as you used to.
The money that's seized by the Sheriff's Department, that cannot be used to offset fuel costs, can it? Cannot be used to offset some of...
I don't think you could get that imagined if...
I believe it would be considered some planning with the county normally provides for operations, yeah.
I can, I can support this budget amendment and it sounds like if, if y'all are, if y'all are telling, put thirty-two percent on and then you're doing another, you're not, your contingency wouldn't be twenty percent more, but if you're telling them to, to assume a thirty-two percent rise over the six hundred...
Yes, that's correct.
I guess that's as good of a guess as, as anybody could make.
Yep.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, I, I'll make the motion that we approve budget amendment number forty.
Okay. Motion for approval of budget amendment number forty from Mr. Robertson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mike Phillips with the Sheriff's Department will present a request to apply for some funds from the Governor's Highway Safety Program.
I hope you walked over here.
From the parking space, yes. Sir, I did. This, what we're asking for is consent to apply for the Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant. This is actually a continuation grant. This will be our third year in the traffic grant. That's what this is. This will be our third final year in that grant. The total amount of the grant will be a hundred and one thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. There is a fifty percent match this year and we'll, it'll be fifty thousand, seven sixty-one fifty and we'll use asset forfeiture funds to pay that match.
Captain Phillips, will this include, do we have to hire anybody for this?
We've already hired two. We've got two people on this grant.
And, and are we obligated to pay them when this grant ends?
Yes. And the sheriff anticipates putting them into the regular budget. Of course, we'll see where that goes.
When does our obligation end to keep them employed?
I'm sorry?
When does the obligation end to keep them employed? Is there a time? If the grant was three years, are we obligated to keep them employed for an additional three years?
Twelve months.
One year?
Okay. Okay. Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve the grant.
Motion to approve the grant from Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I did have a little discussion, I'm sorry. I'm not going to change my, my vote, but pretty much we've said all along that when the, when the funding runs out for these positions, then, and, and we're obligated to fund them for that extra year, then I guess we're obligated to fund them for that extra year. But after that, I think, I think we really, really, really have to take a hard look to see, is this, is this something that we really have got to have because everybody's just getting pinched, so.
I understand.
Not, not meaning to rain on the parade, but...
Right. The problem we're running into, Mr. Phillips says, it's bad and we're just not seeing any evidence it's going to get better anytime soon.
I understand.
But we do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next item, item G, is a request to approve the March two thousand and eleven tax refunds and releases. The releases for the month of March totaled eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents in, for the county. And the refunds for March was one thousand, seven dollars and five cents for the county.
Okay. Floor's open for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is a request to approve a resolution opposing any attempt by the state to reduce county revenues for capital, school capital needs, or to shift additional cost to the counties. And Commissioner Griffith is the sponsor of that resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I think that it's important that the community know the extent in which this board supports our public schools and the dollar amount that we do that. I think it's also important that the community realize what the thought process is and what we are facing on this end. And potentially, what the governor is asking counties to pick up and the impact that that will have to this community, to this county, to every single taxpayer. And I strongly support this resolution. And would request that we adopt it and that we sign it. And that it be sent to every single member that represents us at the state, as well as the governor. And I would be happy to read the resolution for the record.
If you would, please.
Whereas counties are statutorily responsible for providing public school facilities in North Carolina and contribute significant county funds for classroom expenses. And whereas counties spend more than $1.5 billion annually for public school capital needs and $2.5 billion for public school operating expense. In Iredell County alone, we spend more than $37.3 million annually for the public school capital needs, plus $36.6 million annually for public school operating expenses, and $3.9 million annually for community college capital needs and operating expenses. And whereas the counties rely on local sales tax, property taxes, the county share of lottery funds, and the county share of corporate income tax to help fund public school capital needs. And we have issued public debt based on these revenue streams. And whereas counties have lost more than $1.25 billion in lottery and corporate income tax school construction funds over the current biennium. And Iredell County alone has lost more than $2 million in lottery and corporate income tax school construction funds. And whereas the governor's budget proposal permanently eliminates the county's share of the corporate income tax and reduces the county's lottery share by 75%, costing Iredell County almost $2.8 million per year more than the $27.7 million per year in revenues dedicated to public school construction needs. And whereas the budget proposal shifts responsibilities to pay for replacement school buses to counties would cost approximately $640,000 for Iredell County. And whereas the budget proposal also takes the unprecedented step of forcing counties to assume the workers' compensation cost for state-paid public school employees, $34.6 million per year, which would annually cost Iredell County $562,000. And community college employees, $1.7 million per year, which would create a cost to Iredell County of $45,770. And also, to fund school tort claims in the tune of $4.6 million per year, costing Iredell County $170,000. Whereas, the budget proposal reflects an overall cost shift to the counties of $345 million in 2011 and '12 alone, requiring counties to raise property taxes to manage a loss of this magnitude. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Iredell County Board of Commissioners adamantly opposes the unfunded mandates and the losses of county revenue included in the governor's budget proposal. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be transmitted to the members of the General Assembly to let them know of the opposition to these unprecedented changes in county responsibility and the use of county revenues to balance the state budget, adopted this day, April, 19th day of April, 2011. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing not, there is a motion for adoption. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith.
The next item is put on there for you to discuss an initiative that has come as a recommendation from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Recently, Commissioner Griffith and myself attended the district meeting of the Association in Wilkes-Barre. And one of the items that came out of that meeting was a request and encourage meetings with our legislators prior to the Assembly Day, which is scheduled for May the 25th, I believe. And they're encouraging that each county meet at some point in time between now and then with our legislators to discuss the county's position on several bills that impact the legislative goals that were established by the Association. Those goals are attached, and I don't want to speak for Mrs. Griffith, but I believe she did indicate that she would be willing to facilitate such a meeting with our legislators and working with the staff to put something together on that.
I would be willing to do that if the board is willing to have a date and look at facilitating this. I believe the legislators in Raleigh were hired to balance the budget, or they were elected to balance the budget and to control spending, just like we are. I think we need to make our voices heard, that the people in this county are tired of being taxed. They don't want any more taxes, and they want spending under control. We want them to do their job and in as nice a way as possible. With a smile on my face, I'll be happy to facilitate that, a meeting.
And they have a meeting here in Iredell County?
Yes, sir. Ask them to come to this county.
And at the present time, if they're in session, so we'd have to meet on Monday or Friday, is that right?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have any possible dates? I'd be glad to come, but...
There's not a recommended date at this time. As Commissioner Norman said, it would have to be a weekend or a Friday, a Friday evening or a weekend, because most of the time, and you can help us with this, but I think normally, you go down on Monday and come back on Thursday night. So, Friday, and if they're in business or have a profession, then usually, Friday is the only day they've got to do that. So, it's probably going to be either a Friday late or a weekend.
You're going to have a difficult time getting them now, this late in the budget year. They're swamped right now with emails, phone calls, lines outside their office when they go to a committee meeting and come back. I mean, it's like running a gauntlet, so...
Well, I would be happy to take the concerns of this board and address them by telephone to our representatives instead of an actual county assembly day. I will facilitate this however I can to accommodate the board and our legislatures.
You'll get as much good off phone calls as you will trying to meet with them, because you won't have half of them, you won't have a third of them here.
Unfortunate, since we pay their salaries.
I have to catch them on cell phones when they're riding south and north, so...
We can table this if the board would like to discuss this at a different time. Or I'll be happy to help facilitate this any way that I can.
I mean, I think we all agree on this, on these. I don't think there's any discussion there at all. I've been fussing for a couple of years now, and some of them are our delegation. They always want to give a break on county taxes. I tell them, hey, if you want to cut people's taxes, that's great. You just cut state taxes. Leave our revenues alone. We can't go and give people breaks on your state tax rate. Why you feel you need to give people a break on county tax rate? So, and then, as far as shifting responsibilities to counties, and that'd be easy if, you know, the feds are going to push down to the states, states push down to the counties. We don't have anybody to push to except the taxpayers. So, I've shared my thoughts with Dr. Forster, who's our state senator, with Gray Mills, and the rest of them. You're welcome to join as well.
I was on the phone with one this afternoon at 2:15. Walked out of the House session and called me and said to talk about closing the Mooresville Deanery Office. That's out right now, so we're back on. They're working for us down there right now, believe me, they are. There's a lot of rumors going around that aren't so, and some of them are true. It's not time to panic just yet. The House is doing their budget. Then, it goes over to the Senate. Then, the Senate sends it back. And then, when it's time to panic.
I'm not panicked, but I believe in sending a unified message from this board. And would not want to communicate a message to our legislatures that is not in support of this board.
The only other thing I would add that's not in here is, again, I've been beating this drum for a couple of years. The only way that we can cut our budgets is if they change the rules that mandate that we spend the money. It's very difficult to cut education budgets when they dictate and demand that certain services are provided by the school system. So, you can say, well, we cut, you know, we'll just cut their budget. But the problem is, is if they still have all these requirements to fund that stuff, that's the problem. If we gave them the freedom to spend the school board, Department of Social Services, the Health Department, if they had the freedom and the latitude to make the decisions about how they spend their money and what they're not going to spend it on, then they could probably survive some of the reductions that are coming their way. So, that's the only other thing I would add, is if they're going to cut the budget, they need to cut the rules.
Mr. Chairman, could I modify? I don't know how that works. Can I make a modification to this, or does it need to be removed and then re-presented? I apologize that I don't know the procedure.
That's fine, there's no problem. I was going to say, the only thing I've got a problem with is enhanced river basin monitoring and streamlined rulemaking. That sounds really good.
Yeah.
Most likely, it's damaging. Most likely, it's very expensive. So, when we say we want them to cut spending, and then, we turn around and we want to enhance river basin monitoring and streamlined rulemaking, we've just contradicted ourselves.
Well, just for clarification, these were the goals that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners voted on. I attended that meeting.
I understand.
And this is...
That's like the most conservative group you've ever been to.
No, it is not.
Well, they're more so now.
Yes, they are.
Well, I've never been under the illusion that everybody belonging to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners had good sense. I've sat in a room with a lot of them, and a lot of them are just not real smart.
And from my understanding, when I attended the meeting with Mr. Mashburn, was that we could choose the items that we wanted to talk to our legislatures about.
Well, you mind doing some homework?
No, sir, I do not mind.
Okay. Won't you see if you could, if you would, I would request that you get a consensus from this board, which of these measures they would like be included in a letter.
All right.
And you can do that, and you can craft the letter to your pleasure and ask Ms. Moore to put it in form. We'll sign it and send it to them.
Okay.
Okay, is that fair enough? Okay. But thank you for your effort. I appreciate you going to that meeting, and I appreciate you staying on top of things.
I truly want to. We all want to do what we can.
Yes, ma'am.
We all want to do what we can.
And the last item, under the administrative matters as approval, your request to approve the April 5, 2011 minutes.
Motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Norman. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Next item, announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, we have one announcement. Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, we have two announcements. And next, we move to appointments to boards and commissions. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, we have two appointments. The floor is open for nominations.
Motion to table.
Motion to table from Mr. Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's see, unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business to come to our attention? Public comment period. New business. County managers report.
Mr. Chairman, only a couple of items that I have. First of all, is just to remind you that county offices will be closed this Friday, as will the state offices and the town offices. And the other thing, I just, I was hoping by this time to give you a better report on the progress we're making on the Animal Services Building. But due to some delay in materials and other factors, including the weather, there has been a delay on that. So, it appears that substantial completion will not be until between the first and the mid part of June. There's a lot been done, but there's still a lot that's left to be done. And our experience over the years has been, a lot of times, that a lot of activity at the beginning of the project, and things go real well. And then, somewhere along the line, if there's a delay that takes them off of the job for any reason, then it's hard to get them back on the job. And that's kind of what's happened here. Although, they've been on the job, it's, there's been some delays in materials and so forth, and as well as the weather. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions of the manager? If not, we deleted the closed session for the, an order. A motion for adjournment is in order.
So moved.
So moved. Mr. Norman makes a motion for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.